Evening Nottingham, welcome to another Board of Selectmen meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If we could have a call this meeting to order, start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to recognize Steve Saroff as a person who's been reporting on various boards throughout the years and other events happening in town. Just wanted to thank you for your ongoing, you know, commitment to reporting and making sure everybody's aware of what's happening in town. So, thank you.
I'll try to get your name spelled right.
Okay. All right. Okay. That further ado, we'll move right into minutes payroll, well, actually manifest and payroll. So, everybody had an opportunity to review those?
Yeah.
Any questions? No?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and the payroll manifest of November sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor? Unanimous? Minutes?
So, the one question I have about the minutes is what Kelly sent out was the file that I sent, which was DD underscore blah, blah, blah. And I thought you had sent out another one after that. I don't know that there were any additional changes than what I had marked, but...
No, I don't think so either. But I did not have the end. I don't know if it sent me the end.
Yeah, probably did, but...
I believe my computer didn't save it, I'm not, so I'm not entirely sure.
You want to just table this until...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So, the minutes will be tabled. Reports from assigned boards and committees, budget.
Thursday night.
Thursday. All right, planning? He's not here. Anybody else?
I don't know on top of it, I can't tell you what they're up to.
I heard there was a cancellation of some meeting, I wasn't sure if it was planning or...
There was one, one case in a meeting got postponed.
Okay.
Not a case, but a conceptual discussion.
Okay.
The meeting didn't happen.
CIP?
So, I got word the department has submitted their wish lists for the town side.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna distribute that to the rest of the CIP committee and tentatively scheduling the next meeting for next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow.
Absolutely, as well.
All right, boy, you got a busy schedule, huh? Marston?
Uh, nothing to share at this point.
No? How are they making with the, I thought they were pouring the pads and...
Have they started pouring the pads?
They were working out there today, I think.
Today?
Oh, cool.
Getting ready for the pads.
Okay, all right.
I don't know that we have a delivery date.
So, stay tuned then, right? Okay. Town Administrator report.
All right. This week is the NHMA Annual Conference, back in person for a day, and then they're doing remote stuff on Thursday and some on Friday. It's probably too late to get you in for in-person if you for some reason wanted to go to Manchester, but if you want to look at the online offerings, there's probably still time to get you in for that if you're interested.
Hey, did they make the on- online stuff available on demand afterwards?
They did. They, I've seen that in the past.
Okay.
Yeah. The materials always are, sometimes the show is and sometimes it isn't.
Yeah, because I mean, they make it impossible for people to attend by holding them on weekdays during business hours, but...
Yeah. If I see that, I will send it along.
Thank you. Yep.
Thursday night here is a public information session on the bridge replacement on one fifty-two. That's one of the bridges, just after the school from here, just east and north of the school from here. They came and talked to you about that, and this is the next step in their process, taking public input on that. Put the, put December fourth on your calendar, that Saturday morning is the annual holiday parade. You haven't done that already?
Say that date again?
Fourth, Saturday the fourth.
Pull out your ugly, pull out your ugly sweater.
Pull out your ugly sweater, yes, if that is your...
Chris, are you leading the parade today, this year?
No.
Why not?
Wait, Fawn will be leading the parade.
Yes, that would be the responsibility.
I'll say, we'll, we'll even chip in and get you an ugly sweater if you want one.
No, I walk in the very back with a shovel, remember? The, in your pile, it's something we forgot to stick on the agenda, it's a letter about a time capsule concept. If you have time tonight during the, you know, while other things are going on, you get a chance to read up on it. And we had it in your folder, but we didn't get it on this. The Old Town Hall renovation question that you discussed with the School Board Committee last meeting, we're close on having an RFP ready and a scope of work. Dale's finalizing that. Couple of open questions to, to just, you don't have to make decisions about it, but the things that we're juggling right now. One or two bathrooms in that space in the back. We're gonna put a little kitchenette back there. If we change the method of heating, if we change, use a different kind of heating system, we'll free up some space without having a humongous old nineteen forties furnace or whatever the vintage that thing is and a tank. So, one or two bathrooms is one question. The, you know, just get more space if you have one. Two could allow you to serve larger numbers of people as a place of assembly. Cost more, obviously, so we're still juggling that question. And second is the possibility, we need to, we need to add an egress door of some sort, you need two ways out of any place of assembly. If we use the old, what is the old office space for offices, that can no longer be considered an egress or a way out, because that's gonna be locked at night and the offices will be locked.
Oh, interesting, okay.
So, we need to, there is a way out through that back furnace room, but to make that an official egress, it's gonna be a pretty space-consuming way out of there, so we're gonna look at possibly replacing a window with a door in the main hall. So, that changes the, changes the, the main room a little bit.
Yeah.
We can go look at that if you want to see it. I thought I'd go check with the Historical Society on Thursday and see if they had any thoughts on it. None of that stuff is that old or that, not even from a historic point of view, but we don't want to think of it too much. Those are the two open things that we have before we finalize that RFP. We might not even get final answers on that before we get it out, because we're really racing to get, to get ready by December thirty-first, so we may have to make those decisions later. The school committee has looked at the scope of work and they're comfortable with it, it fits their needs.
Okay.
So, we're close, hope to have something by the end of the week.
Okay.
We really need to be under contract. If you're gonna spend money on it, it really, we really need to be under contract by the end of December.
Yep.
Because that's the only place we have.
Yep, yep.
And then lastly, I had hoped to have a tax rate discussion with you tonight, and the latest I heard from the DRA is they're waiting for one more piece of information earned from the SAU School District. Can't finalize without that, so I haven't heard anything about that as of four or six, so.
Okay.
Stay tuned, we're probably gonna need to assemble at some point. We can't wait until your next, well, we can, but we don't want to wait until your next meeting to finalize the tax rate, because that means the bills won't go out until...
Right.
That's what I have.
Is that something we have to do in a meeting altogether?
If you want to have a substantive conversation about it, you should do that publicly.
Okay, yeah.
If, if we get a clear, you know, if it's, if it's relatively straightforward and by email you're comfortable just leaving it as it, as it is, it comes through as a preliminary rate, the real discussion for you is do you want to use fund balance?
Right, okay.
To offset that.
Yeah, 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 okay.
You could, you could have some discussion about that now, but without any numbers, it's kind of hard to, hard to do that well, so...
That makes sense.
Yeah, so...
Fine, okay.
You, you may, you may come out of your budget conversation later deciding that you want to get together more frequently over the next few weeks anyways, so...
Is that something, Chris, that we want to tentatively plan to meet next Monday night?
I, I wasn't gonna be the one to bring it up, but...
Yeah.
You, you might want, I don't know, we'll see. See how you feel about that thing for me, but it's that time of year, so...
Yep.
And that is all I have for you.
Okay. Action items review from last meeting, the twenty-two budget. Any comments or questions? We'll dive into that more. Assessing? No, all right. General business? Budget?
All right. I don't know how in-depth you want to get tonight. This is the first draft. This is really a compilation of all of the department requests. I haven't drilled down much with them, I gave them some guidance on how to do the payroll lines, but other than that, this is them...
So, I just have one quick question or comment. You know, this past two years with the pandemic and all that, you know, I was looking at the moderator's salary, and I think that's pretty low considering the amount of meetings that that person has to go to, what they have to do to run an election and so on. I think we should seriously look at increasing that.
Okay. That's line thirty-five?
Yes.
What, where do you want to go from here? You've, you've got a, you've got a whole lot of new stuff here, do you want to...
Is this what you're being proposed, is it twelve-hundred or...
Well, I, I think, Chris, what you're asking is do we want to go line by line on this or do we want to talk generalities, general...
Yes, I get that, yes. I was, I wasn't on individual line item, I was speaking more globally.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The, you know, you're gonna, I assume, want to talk to some of the department heads about the more detailed level stuff.
Yep.
If, if you want to just kind of hit the high spots here and then tell me who you want to talk to in more detail, is that...
That's fair.
Is that, because this really is a first crack, it's, you know, at a, at a total of essentially four point six million, before you get to warrant articles, I think you're probably gonna want us to come back with a smaller number before we go to the balance.
Yeah, and the thing that's interesting, as I was looking through it, is like, there were, there were not a lot of lines that had significant increases. Right, there, there were some, for sure. Some of it, you can look at it and say, okay, that's driven by specific premiums increasing or additional staff and stuff like that. But there's a lot of line items here that are zero percent increase, so, but I, I do think we're gonna need to meet with department heads to kind of talk through this and, and elected officials who are asking for additional money.
Do you want to just touch on the big stuff? Do you want to put, put it all off? What's your pleasure?
Let's touch on the big stuff, yeah.
The themes that you're gonna be hearing about or the, the things you probably don't spend most of your time talking about, but department heads about.
Yep.
So, I had planted the seed a while back about doing something differently with, with our merit pool in this really high inflation environment. You've, you've heard from a couple of department heads about it directly, you're, you're seeing the same thing we are, I'm sure, in your personal lives. We've, we've always tried to accommodate that through the merit process, but we, that's a five or six-year thing we've had in place. I don't really know what happened before my time here, because we did that pretty early on.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there might have been just a blanket, each year if there's going to be pay raises, everybody got the same percentage, kind of...
Prior to that, yes.
Yeah, I think that was the way the world used to work.
Yep.
And the board at that time, you were there, the board at that time wanted to shift away from that, and I, I think that's worked okay in a, in a low inflation environment, but I think we're in a little different time here. I've proposed to you a, a, one of those blanket cost of living adjustments modeled here on, on April one start, because you're not gonna know what you've got to work with until after town meeting, so...
Yeah.
That's, that's the number that's plugged in here, as well as leaving a little bit for merit.
Yeah.
Less than we typically do, because, you know, we're trying to cover some of that with a colon, so...
I mean, that's consistent with what the board talked about last meeting. In terms of taking that approach.
Yeah. I'm gonna just keep rolling unless you, unless you interrupt me, is that okay?
Yeah.
Town board, nothing dramatic there, the, the, having a deputy in place, she's, she's doing a good job and everything's smooth in that regard from what I've done so far. Elections, we have three next year, we have town meeting, a September state primary and a November general.
Okay.
So, those costs bounce around the, and hopefully in post, post-pandemic framework, they don't cost as much to run. We'll, we'll see what the world looks like in March.
Right.
One outlier here is the moderator has proposed buying another ballot counting machine. The state hasn't finalized which ones they're gonna allow towns to use yet, I think that's pending.
And what's driving that?
The age of the one we have and the lack of a backup capability, are our primary concern.
Okay.
Better hear from the election office if they're seeing anything.
Yeah.
Let's see, I'm gonna keep going. Every couple of years, we have to do an audit of our deferred compensation or the pension liability, that's what that GAZB forty-five is, that comes and goes every few years. I'm gonna move down to line eighty-six, this is the benefits and insurance portion, health insurance premiums are actually going down.
Yeah.
Which is gonna help us a great deal. This, this number, this is a really hard thing to budget, because we, we know, we know who's participating now and what levels, you know, some are individuals, some are couples, some are families.
Yeah.
Almost a quarter of our eligible employees aren't on our insurance, they're with a spouse or with a parent's plan still, because we have some young employees. So, it's, this is hard to know a year from now what we're gonna, what we're gonna cover, so what this is modeled on is really what we have today, as well as proposed new positions. There are a few in the budget.
Yep.
And so, we slot some money in there. I've not yet, I just realized today, I hadn't slotted the new fire department positions in here, so that, that number's gonna move a little bit. This is, it's also modeled on keeping the same plans we have now, which is, they seem to be working quite well for employees and the cost's going down. The FICA and the Medicare, those are driven entirely by gross payroll, so as that goes up, these will go up with them. This is the first full year of a higher employer contribution for police and fire retirement. Those numbers went up in July of this year, so we had a half-year increase for this year and then we'll have another half-year increase for next year. The proposed, I did catch the proposed firefighter increase in this, in this line, so I gotta go back there and fix that. I'm gonna keep rolling through, planning and zoning. One of these lines here shows up later on one sixty-six is membership in the Regional Planning Commission. The planning board has asked that we begin to pay dues to the Regional Planning Commission. That may produce some savings in other services, we're still trying to pin numbers on those, but other than that, nothing significant. If we, if we do move forward with something at the SA, with the SAU and the Old Town Hall, we'll have to go back and look at some of these facility costs for those, we'll, we'll know that in time, hopefully for final budget. Insurance, we continue to get, in property liability on one sixty-two, we continue to get premium holidays or discounts late in the year, but you can't know what those are gonna be, so you have to budget the full premium and, and hope that something comes through. PD, you'll see the payroll line is down here, because we had retirement payouts, the, the last of the old system of accumulating earned time, vacation and sick time, retired last year, so we've kind of gotten past those costs. We budgeted for those, we knew they were coming, and we budgeted for them, we don't have those next year, so we can pull the budget back a little bit. This is the same headcount in the PD. You'll see a number of equipment requests here.
What about the, so the PD coverage for the tricentennial events?
Mm-hmm.
So, is that actually coming out of the tricentennial budget?
We have, we have modeled this on whatever town staff costs or material costs or whatever, those things will be here in the operating budget. If they have to go get detail officers from other towns, because we don't have enough people, those would come from the...
So, what does this, so does this line reflect?
This is the chief's estimation of how many overtime hours tricentennial events will require.
With our staff?
With our staff, yeah. And there's, I think, two, maybe three dates that they would look to get outside help, depending on their staffing levels now.
Okay.
The parade and the event on the hill, the Green Act, I think are the two that might require some more outside help. You'll see equipment requests, and there's more in the, that I pulled out as kind of obvious warrant articles that you may, you may want to stick back here in the operating budget, but they involve ballistics vests and uniforms, e-ticket printers, they have, they now have the MDTs, the, the computer laptops in the car. There's a printer you can get to go with them, so you can print out a summons or a ticket or whatever, that's the next logical step for that. They don't have that piece of equipment, so...
Because they're writing it out, no?
Yeah, or they're, yeah, they must be, you know, they gotta hand something to the recipient. And also a digital speed sign, one of those things you drive along that tells you how fast you're going, that's a...
And that's just one?
Yeah. Then your trailers around from spot to spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Then a cruiser, as, as usual, starting to see some increased value on the trade ends as the car market gets nutty, right? Into fire, chief is proposing the move to round-the-clock staffing at the two-thirds mark in the year, I think is the detail, I think we got on the second page, so that would be, what, August first. Costs for that show up here in the salary line for that portion of the year, as well as other related costs, you see things like uniforms, physicals, stuff like that, that, you know, you have to equip people, if you're gonna hire them, you gotta, gotta gear them up, so that's what most of that is. We don't have any information on the grant yet on that, that was, there's potential there, but chief's still working on that, so I don't, I don't know what that timetable, how that affects the proposed budget. There's all kinds of things going on in fire, but those are the big pieces.
What's the deal with internet?
That is a, so we switched, you'll, you'll see all kinds of chaos in the internet and the phone lines. The phone lines are now, in this building, they're through the internet, so they're showing up in one bill, and now that building's different, so the, the phone and the internet lines are bouncing around, trying to find a better way to present it all.
Okay.
You know, they're just, they aren't as big a number as they used to be in the grand scheme of things and percentage of the budget.
It's just the way, yeah, yeah, okay.
You see the same thing in police.
Yep.
We're, we're trying to capture stuff the right way, but it, it turns into a whole lot of just crazy manual data entry.
Yep.
For not a lot of benefit, so... Let's see, let's look over there, where this goes on. Highway, this is one of the new proposed positions, which we're envisioning to be a combination of public works and recreation, work with recreation in the summer, public works in the fall and winter, more, more or less a shared arrangement.
And a lot of that was around the, like, the beach?
The beach, the fields, the, you know, getting the trash and...
Yeah, yeah, not, not that they're a camp counselor in the summer, right?
No, no, not, no, not, you know, yeah, maintaining these, not mowing, we don't have the equipment to do that, or, you know, this is more maintenance and that kind of stuff in the summer. Float-through recycling, you know, just have a floating row across. Ideally, we'd find somebody that could plow, that could do those things. Fill in this row is probably not gonna be easy, but...
Yep.
Pretty confident we can keep somebody busy. Let's see, we're paying more for materials, salt prices went up by a quarter, we can still get it, that's great, huge wild boards with right now. We're full, we are stocked up, but at a twenty-five percent increase in the commodity prices, I don't know what we can do with that. Continue to use more gravel, that larger gravel on the, on the gravel roads, that seems to be working really well, and mixing some small stone in with the, with the sand from the gravel pit for winter use. We have eight more miles of dirt roads this year.
Yep, yeah.
It doesn't turn into a twenty percent increase in costs all by itself, but they, they are gonna get over time more attention than they used to, so...
Yep.
Let's see, what else? Engineering, you know, as, as you heard about with Highland, we're expecting to need more of that kind of help as we do more, particularly around the lake.
Yeah.
This may shake out a little bit with what we do around Culver, it's a hell seat on Cooper Hill Road. I'm gonna come back and talk about those again later, but we're, why don't I cover that now? Two seventy-six, line two seventy-six, this is typically where we budget for asphalt maintenance.
Yeah.
And we also have a separate warrant... And we also have a separate warrant article that has historically been a single project kinda thing, a road reconstruction, most, most typically. It was a, we need three hundred thousand dollars to reconstruct X number of feet of whatever road. Most of that work is done, that reconstruction work, every, everything in town has been either newly constructed or reconstructed in the last thirty years. Our bigger priorities now are, Ledge Farm remains on the list and out of reach frankly. And the Culver on Kelsey and the Culver on Cooper Hill Road, those two Culver jobs are too big for one, for one year's warrant article. They're gonna cost more than the three hundred that we typically, that we typically spend, so I think what we're gonna come back and propose, I have to work on the mechanics of it, but it's some kind of reserve fund to take a couple of years of this to build up, to take care of those two Culver projects. Those are the next two big concerns that don't fit well within a single year's budget. Unless we, unless you wanna talk about borrowing or you wanna talk about asking the voters for a lot more, this is driven by an attempt to keep the cost kinda stable across capital side and operating budget side.
Hey Chris, it's probably early to ask this, and I, I don't know enough about it myself, but with the new infrastructure bill that has passed, is there any potential?
I, I was trying to find, we were, we were hoping that Ledge Farm could be, you know, a possibility for that.
Yep.
It feels at this point like most of the highway money in the, in the new infrastructure bill is gonna go to highways. I don't, we haven't heard from NHMA anything to the contrary than I've read. It feels like it's gonna be on larger roads.
Okay.
Not the, not like an ex- an expansion of the, the, the gas tax kickback that the state gives us, I, I, I haven't seen anything that indicates.
No, I was hoping
That's gonna, yeah, we all were, that's one of the reasons we've been shovel-ready on, on Ledge Farm. You know, we got it really close to being ready, we don't have these sorts of funds.
Yep, okay.
How long has those barriers been up on Kelsey Road?
They went up last year.
So they've been through a winter already?
Yeah.
All right, have we had any, any safety issues in regards to them other than it's just one lane?
Nothing that I've heard about. They got a jug of plow trucks over there.
Yeah.
Cause we can't send one of ours, or we can send a small one over the bridge to finish our portions. But I haven't heard of any other headaches related to that. And that's how, you know, that, those projects are also good for ARPA funds, so
Oh, okay.
You know, they're
Yep.
I think what is probably, real rough, ARPA covers one and a couple of years of a warrant article covers another, something like that, that's the scale that we're looking at.
So other than the gargrels on that, that particular culvert, how is the integrity of the culvert?
It's, well, it needs to be replaced.
Can we get through another winter, is one of them?
Yeah, yeah, the, the engineers have not said, hey, you need to do something about this right away, they've, 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 they're waiting for our go-ahead to take the design to the next level. That's not gonna qualify for state bridge aid, we learned that a couple of months ago, so we're on our own with Kelsey.
Okay.
Cooper Hill's probably gonna be the same, it's, it's bigger and deeper. But gonna need some engineer, cause there's a house right near it and there's a curve in the road.
Okay.
That's, that's gonna be a problem. Solid waste collection, we continue to see, you know, increased volume and increased pricing. We're getting a little bit better revenue on some items, so we'll catch some of this on the backside. We'll be able to shape that out better when we have the year complete, but nothing else dramatic there. You'll see going down to three oh seven, this, this year we started using welfare dollars for scholarship purchases with the rec program. The rec programs have subsidized those things internally in the past, which is not really how the rec revolving fund is supposed to work, so that seemed to work out pretty well.
Yep.
We rarely spend that money anymore. Social service agencies really haven't dug into this, I, I would assume that for the most part these would stay about the same, and our recommendation has been a merger of a couple of organizations. We'll, we'll go back and look at these requests, but we've been on a pretty, pretty steady collection of folks and dollar amounts there for a while. Recreation, you'll see some program and equipment costs, the biggest change being Marston. We, we have to start taking care of Marston now, we started mowing it this year, but need to finish off that grass and then take care of it. And you'll see, I think you actually, I sent electronically another list of equipment requests that the Parks and Rec director is trying to tackle. Library includes, I'm down to three forty-four, library includes moving a position from part-time to full-time
Right.
That they discussed with you in their visit recently.
Yep.
That is reflected in the benefit lines.
Already.
So there's a small increase in wage cost there, and then the benefit cost increase associated with that. And then you're down to the conservation, they're, they're not asking for anything different, debt service goes down a little bit. There's your total four point six. And then the pieces that I've pulled out of this second separate sheet here, all the usual now we're getting, we're not done with the CIP process, but the usual capital reserve deposits are planned, you know, we try to keep that as stable as we can. So I imagine we'll end up proposing all of those similar warrant articles that appear every year. The library will be asking to replace their handicap lift, that one was an office, one-time thing. You, like, like I said earlier, if you wanna put these back in the operating budget, that's of course your, your prerogative, but
Yep.
And also, the police chief will be asking for tasers and training for their officers. You may be surprised, you may be surprised to learn that our officers don't carry non-lethal options. And she would like to change that as well as add dashboard cameras to the cruisers, those are not body cams, those are the
Yep.
Cruiser cams. She can give you much more detail on those, I should be doing a lot of research on each of them, so. Those I figured are standalone items, if you're looking for ways to shrink the operating budget, those stand alone there.
I know this is really small and, and compared to the big picture, but does it really make sense to put money into the three hundredth celebration? If we're in the midst of the three hundred celebration?
You can take, take it off.
Yep.
Doesn't move the tax rate, that's for sure.
No, I understand, that's why I said it's small in the scope of the universe, right?
The, and then things without a tax impact, still cost money, but they're just not, they're just broken out as different. The, in the CIP, the fire chief has proposed a second ambulance. And we'll cease, I, I haven't drilled down on, on public works Trump requests yet, whatever, whatever it is will come out of the, whatever's left of the reserve fund. But I, I can't detail that for you, cause I haven't dug into that. There could obviously be more, there could be other things that either get pulled out of the operating side or other things that materialize here that you wanna warrant articles for, or if there are things in the operating budget now that you wanna pull out and ask the voters for separately, we can. And then while we're looking at warrant articles, the things that I am aware of that are probably coming or maybe coming in terms of warrant articles. The let's see. Private roads, I'm helping somebody with language for a private road acceptance warrant article, so you'll probably see a petition for more of that. You may see a petition for property tax exemption for solar systems, I know a resident was working on that. We may propose a change or a discontinuation of a chunk of Cahill Lane, working with property owners there to clean up one of those emergency lanes, turn classified roads that, you know, we're, you're gonna hear about that again, another one of those situations tonight, we're still through those. And there may be a request from the conservation commission to change the eligible uses of the fund slightly. Those are just things that, that I'm aware of that may or may not materialize, and that's certainly not all inclusive, but those are just things that I
Well, it's an interesting first pass. You know, like I said, if you look at it line, line by line, it's hard to look and say, these things are completely out of whack, you know? Yeah. Some of it is just, it is what it is.
So I, I just wanna make sure I understand you correctly, Chris, you says the fire department wants to purchase a second ambulance to, so have two ambulances within the station?
Yes.
And I agree with Donna, we should ax the three hundredth.
So I think as far as the next step, I, I think it would be a good idea to meet with the department heads
Yep.
And go through, go through in detail.
And if possible, when it goes to deliberative session, I'd like to see the department heads present their warrant articles.
The individual warrant articles? Yeah, they typically do, I think.
The highway department didn't last year.
Yeah.
So I would
Actually, no, you, you, the fire chief's the only one that's done that, right?
Right.
The board members have always done, I was thinking of, thinking of Jay this piece, but
Yeah.
Board members have done the other ones.
Right.
I think we should talk about that. Cause we shouldn't, we shouldn't be putting forward a warrant article that we don't support.
Well, so I'm getting that, they, the, the department head should do that.
I disagree, but we can talk about it.
Well, we'll agree to disagree.
All raises for all our employees.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about that at the last meeting. At a time when it's hard to find talent, talent, and you wanna retain good talent, and you've got such a, you know, inflationary situation. Gotta make sure we're doing right by the employees.
You want to I don't, I don't know who I can get here next week, but I imagine I can get somebody. You wanna start this department head process? A week from now? You up for that? It's gonna, where, where you've got a long way to go in a relatively short period of time, like
Yeah, cause the timeframe, I know we talked, we're talking about when the deliberative session is gonna be, but that's way earlier than we're used to.
Everything's earlier than we're used to, and we're a little bit later right now than we typically are.
And so Chris, are we ballpark, are we looking January or February for deliberative?
Early February.
Early Feb, okay.
Yep.
See, I, I do think if we're gonna meet with all the department heads, we should start.
All right, I will start.
Anything else on the budget before we move on?
Thanks for putting that first draft together, Chris.
This is a copy and paste exercise for most of the remains, so.
All right, well, scheduling, the scheduling of the deliberative session, we kind of touched that already, is there any more discussion on that, you said earlier?
Well, yeah, you, it's, it's your burden to pick the date, and you have to pick a date between the fifth and the twelfth of February, inclusive. Those are Saturdays.
So
We have only done one deliberative session, and it was COVID flavor. You did it on a Saturday after the school district's deliberative session. So I, I have not had any conversation with anybody in the school, and I mean, if you have anybody talk to the, with the school, I, I, they historically did a weeknight
Yeah.
deliberative session. And so if you want to either talk with them about doing it together or talk with them about using their facility, we need to do those two things. Or if you wanna do it here, we do that. I don't know which place.
I, I don't remember, but in general, what was the feedback, you know, from the town folks about having them both in the same day like that?
I don't recall anything.
Yeah.
I, I think COVID throws such a blanket over everything like that, I mean, everybody was just trying to survive. You know, granted, the, the, there was a, there were contentious or expensive issues on both warrants last year, so that probably did as much to drive traffic and interest in those meetings and everything, but
Right, right, right.
It'd be a long day if they were both on the same day.
We did it last year, that, that's the only reason, like, we did it last year.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't try it again this year.
Yeah, I mean, let's get feedback from the school board, but
Yeah, it worked last year, but now this will be a test, as everything's come back together now as to whether it will really work again, so I'd say let's try it again, and
Yep.
All right, see if they're interested in having that conversation.
Yeah. Please, yes.
Are they on the same timetable as us?
Yeah, the same window that you do, yeah.
Do you, do you, are you shaking your head for yes, doing that all in one day?
Yes, please.
Yeah, we don't need to track it out any longer than we have to.
Well, it is, it is efficient for it.
Yeah, there's a, there's definitely an efficiency.
Yep.
On the flip side of this, one, I mean, I remember the, the decision to go to SB two was we want our Saturdays back, so damn if you do, damn if you don't.
Right.
Right, right.
You should return to your seven o'clock business.
Okay.
Ian. Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Evening. You could just state your full name and address, so it would be on the record?
Sure, Bill and Ann Nowitz, sixteen Cove Road. Should we sit?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for seeing us this evening. As I just said, we reside at sixteen Cove Road, which is the home at the bottom of Cove Road next to the boat launch. And we'd like to discuss Cove Road tonight, so we wrote out what we're gonna talk about, if, if it's okay with the chair, if Ann gives out to each of you.
Yep, yes, you can have Ann out.
Okay. So that you can see what we're referring to. So there's just a few points that we wanted to make. Cove Road was among the roads that were accepted by the town in warrant article nineteen earlier this year. And the intent of the warrant article, as far as what, how we read it, was for the town to take care of the roads listed in the warrant article in its entirety, not just portions. The part of Cove Road that leads down the hill to the boat launch is used by the Nottingham Fire Department for emergency access. And this is indicated on the sign that's posted by the fire department at the boat launch, at, right at the end of the road. We included a picture of the sign, that should be the second enclosure, if you'd like to see it. Off the topic of that, we just felt the emergency lane should most likely be maintained by the town. We understand there have been the potential of accidents on ice in the past, and we don't know if the town could be sued if the fire department couldn't get through in order to get to the water, to, to the frozen ice, or to the lake. The section from the top of the hill to the boat launch on Cove Road has not been maintained regularly in the past, that's true. But neither had sections of Dolofdam Road, Sacks Road, or Mindle Road East, which we understand residents have been informed are now being maintained by the town. So we had a question of what was So we had a question of what was the criteria used to accept those roads fully, but not all of Cove Road? Um, we think a precedent has been set, so we're requesting, since those roads are being fully maintained, that Cove Road be similarly maintained. Uh, we did go through channels, we spoke to Chris Sterndale, and he based his decision on an older plan that labeled the road in question as an approach road. That's the, um, third handout, I believe, in there. Um, it was labeled as a road, however, it was never labeled as a private driveway from what we can see in nineteen forty-five. And there's a later plan dated nineteen fifty-nine, um, which is at the Registry of Deeds, and it lists the entire road as Cove Road. So we don't see any place where it indicates that it's a private driveway. In fact, what we read, um, online was that the attorney that advised the Board of Selectment indicated that the roads in the warrant article should be defined as however they appear on plans approved by the Registry of Deeds. And so we're providing you with a copy, again, of those in the last few pages. Um, so to summarize, we're, we're requesting that the town maintain Cove Road in full, um, down to the boat launch.
Do you have any questions for us?
Just give us a minute, won't you?
Sure, of course.
Chris, process wise, how, how do, how does it happen that plans get changed? So how is it that the nineteen forty-five plan can contradict the nineteen fifty-nine plan? What's that, what happens there?
Uh, I, I, it's not unusual, like, plans, plans change, you know, things get built that don't get built. Uh, people change their desires, or, you know, they, uh, that still happens today. It's not a nineteen forties, nineteen fifties
Yes, yeah.
kind of thing. Um, you, you know, the, the context of the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties subdivisions, you see in the records of those, they're not, well, they're not easy to, you know,
Yeah.
always understand, or, and they don't actually match reality in lots of ways, so, um, it's not unusual. Not unusual, it's something with, you know, we, we have, especially around the lake, we have a lot of roads that have changed names over the years.
Yeah.
They changed locations, they've changed, uh, you know, they're
Yeah.
You, you know examples of roads that used to be different names, and that's, uh, maybe you do. I don't know, each head used to be something else, and, uh, trying to think what else near you that I know is different, but...
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that.
Anyway, uh, it's not unusual, it's not, uh, you know, different people on the land, they wanna do something different with it.
Yeah.
Without doing some more, uh, in-depth research on this, I'm really not, not ready to comment on, on, on this. I would really have to dive into this more to, to make a more informed decision.
We, we assume that that would be the case.
And I would assume the, the rest of the board would, would agree.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, our, our biggest concern is that the fire department uses that road. They do their training down there, and we heard from neighbors that there was an incident on the ice several years ago where a snowmobile hit a child. And apparently the fire department, we weren't living there at the point, at that time, but the fire department went down Cove Road and couldn't get onto the lake because it wasn't maintained. It was plowed up so that the fire department couldn't get there, and he had to, they had to go find a different way to get onto the lake to save this person. Um, luckily, it wasn't as serious an injury, but I'm thinking in the future it could be. And I feel that town's liable that, we didn't put the sign up, it says that the sign's been put up there by the fire department.
When was that sign put up?
I have no idea.
You know?
Current chief doesn't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Susan Hayes, I actually live across from, on the other resident at the end of Cove Road. And our family's been there since nineteen forty-one, I think, um, Donnie, we have known Bill Crofton. Back in the day, that was a mountain, and the road used to be plowed, that hill, um, at times was often on, so it was maintained, and sometimes, other times it wasn't. But to, there have been times where the plow stopped at the very top, so you can't go down, whether it was the fire department or anybody. Um, so I don't understand what, what place to support them as far as the emergency access, but even for those of us who need to get access to our house to block the road, you can't even walk down it because it's a very hot hill, very high amount of snow, so... Um, I just wanna say, I'm here, I also am at the other end of the bottom of the hill, and, um, everybody around the lake uses that road also, so why it's not continued to go down? If you look at some of the earlier plans too, what we're talking about Cove Road now is actually East Road. Cove Road came downhill, so it's just not to go too fast.
Can you just give your address to Lorraine?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
You got it? Okay, good, good.
Either of you know anywhere about the date of the, the boat launch itself? Who owns that land?
Cahill. The, the, right down to the water, down to the end, that was originally part of Cahill.
Part of the, the big parent lot that, the subdivision, the first subdivision came from? You think that, whatever Cahill is now, doesn't exert any ownership over that boat ramp, right?
Cameron doesn't, no, no, not, not that I'm aware of.
Nor did they any other roads that they owned. They owned all the roads in that development.
Just a moment, Sarah, just a moment.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, whichever way you go on this, I don't know what becomes of the boat ramp if you...
Right.
Do, do we suddenly have a town-owned boat ramp? There's a question that I don't know the answer to.
It's an emergency lane. We call it a boat ramp, but it's for emergency access, so if we can just stick with emergency lane to the water, 'cause that's what it, that's what it is, that's what the signs are.
So Chris, does that stretch of the road actually, did that actually have the emergency lane designation?
No, no, that's why we are where we are in this conversation.
Okay. Yep.
Really not, if people do refer to it for a boat ramp, but it's not a boat ramp. So the abuse that becomes coming down the hill and even in the lake, the, the people that spin their wheels and actually undoing destruction to the lake bed, it, it's a mess down there, so I don't, don't make that a public boat.
No, I, I don't think anybody has any desire to create a boat, boat ramp. Well, you can, you can do that by mistake, is my worry, and I, I don't, I don't know the answer, I'm not, um...
I, I've seen people use it that, that, you know, don't belong, that park on the side of the road there now. So, I mean, it's, to me, it's just word of mouth, I mean, it's not gonna be, ever advertised as that.
Oh, I, I don't doubt that, I just, it's the unintended consequence that I, I don't know the, I don't know the answer to. That's why I asked if you knew who owned the, the land that...
The last I knew, yeah, was part of the whole...
Cause our, our research was identical to yours, where we found the same document that you did. Um, where the road ends and where the boat ramp starts, not clear.
Yeah, I mean, the...
Does it go into the lake, or does it stop uphill somewhere? I don't know.
From what I understand, it's the water's edge, but if you go down Cove Road, where you see the telephone poles, that's basically the road that they originally built to get down to those lower lots. So it basically, the road went straight down to the water's edge, where it is right now, is how I was told, growing up, so.
Okay, the gentleman in the back that wasn't hurt, go ahead. And then we're gonna wrap this part up.
The, the original boat ramp
Name and address, please.
Frank Carey, thirty-nine seasons, Cove Road. The original boat ramp was dedicated as a boat ramp for the people that bought the property from John Cahill. If you bought a lot from John Cahill, you could use that. And also as an abbot, if you've got the Cahill permission, everybody that lives in that area is welcome to use the boat. It's never been a public project. As far as the date when the signs were put on it, I'm not sure of the exact date. Bill Medishew was the select person, he went around with the fire chief, and they deemed the particular entrance points, the ease of entrance, and how fast you could get there, to, to surface the lake, the main body of the lake as far as accidents, a fire on the island, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, if you could just check the dates when Bill was the select person, uh, that'll give you the exact dates. Fire chief went out with them, and that's how that all became an emergency entrance to the lake.
Who's the fire chief was who?
In the ease of launching their boat, I mean, they've been ordered to make...
His name's outside the truck.
Gilman, wasn't it? Gilmore or Gil...
But it's definitely been
Eight.
When you say maintained, I'm not talking maintained like a highway. It's never been as bad condition as it has been for the past five years. Um, it's always been accessible. We've gone in, the neighborhood pretty much goes over. Sometimes, we had one person before that, Noeth lived there, that seemed to, they didn't want people in there, so they kinda plowed it in, and at that point in time, the neighbors would go and shovel it out, then you know the area.
Yeah.
The neighbors would go, um, and it wasn't that, it was this guy, I have...
Thank you for pointing that out.
This guy, I have a private contractor, and he didn't like people down there, so he was plowing it in. Well, the neighborhood got together, I have a little skid stamp, and we went over and we're digging out so that the access for the plant to get out there, if there was an emergency, either, you know, some, all went to, there's accidents both ways. Uh, and also Marine Patrol is listed with them as far as an emergency access, if they need assistance on the lake and stuff like that, just because it's so easy and fast to get to.
Okay, thank you.
That's just...
Thank you. So, uh, just to reiterate what I had mentioned earlier, um, you know, we will have to, you know, take this, you know, some time to digest this, and, uh, we're just not prepared to
Yep.
to make a statement or a decision on this tonight.
Fair enough, yeah.
So, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. You want us to keep going, Donna, or you wanna wait?
Yeah, go ahead, cause PLA is...
Yeah, you're, you're up. Just you?
Huh?
Just you?
Just me? Well, for the moment anyways, unless you have questions. Do we wait for Donna?
Nope, we can proceed.
Okay.
Just make sure you state your name and all that for the record, yeah?
Uh, Dee Decker, eleven Lakeview Drive, um, here on behalf of, um, uh, Pawtucket Lake Improvement Association. Uh, we typically come to you guys, um, in the spring, um, to talk about the Lake Coast program, but we wanted to talk to you about, um, this past year, as well as some, um, update you on some things happening on the lake, and make a request to change the way the Lake Coast program is funded. Um, so I sent you a bunch of things, um, by email, hopefully you got them. Um, the first thing is the, um, the Lake Coast summary sheet that I usually provide to you guys at some point during the summer. Um, and it shows what, um, this shows our, our final year, where we landed for the year. The big things are, um, when you look at the estimated funds remaining, on my sheet, it shows that we have three thousand dollars left. According to New Hampshire Lakes, and we're gonna go with New Hampshire Lakes number, we have thirty-nine hundred dollars left, so three thousand nine hundred. Um, that is significantly more than we've ever had, um, remaining in the past, and that is because of the weather that we had this year severely impacted our, um, our hour that the Lake Coast worked. Um, as you know, that we've talked about before, um, if it's raining, um, if it's, um, if there's thunder, lightning, things, um, they don't go out. If it's really cold, and they've been, they've been there for a couple of hours, and there's no activity on the lake, they go home, we don't want anybody getting sick.
Spring was so wet.
So the spring was wet, and then, you know, July was wet, and so it just, it was, um, and, and it was not just Pawtucket Way, it was across New Hampshire. Numbers were down significantly across, um, across the entire, uh, the entire state. So I gave you the numbers for, um, uh, versus two thousand and twenty, just so that you had them to compare them. Um, our volunteer hours were actually up, just for Lake Coast, we're just talking Lake Coast at this point. Uh, number of boats was down significantly, we did ninety-one hundred last year, we did almost fifteen thousand. Um, so that's a significant, ninety-one hundred is, yeah, but ninety-one hundred is...
That's still a lot.
It, that, that's our average. I mean, we're, we're, that's just like, we're back to normal, and we still miss the month of July and early spring, so...
So it was fifteen thousand last year?
It was close to fifteen, just under fifteen thousand last year, yep. Um, we did not have a lot of state park hours this year because we just didn't have a lot of volunteers for Lake Coast, again, like we, um, ran into last year. So some of our areas of concern, um, private boat launches, um, the state parks, um, having two launches, horse, island, and canoe, and managing that. Um, increasing areas of milfoil found around the lake. Um, the fact that we, milfoil has been found near Drowns Dam, um, is a big concern. It's the first time it's been found over in the Fundy area. Um, we think that it is the water being pulled towards Drowns Dam um, that has kind of moved it that direction. Um, the increasing areas of milfoil around the lake, if you look at the two maps that I sent, and these maps are provided by Neil Sanchez, who's here and can answer questions if you guys have questions. Um, and you'll see that there is a big increase in areas of milfoil, and also the quantity of milfoil that has been removed. Where's my number? Um, the, the number of gallons has, has just exploded on how much, um, milfoil has been, and apparently I didn't... Oh, um, I didn't, um, print that, uh, that page. So... As far as funding the Lake Coast program, the, we have come before you each spring and requested funds from the Aquatic Invasive Species Trust Fund that you guys established a number of years ago to build up over time, so that when there's, becomes an issue, if the town needs to step in and do something, there's money settles, set aside. Um, as you can see, just on Pawtucket Way, that time may be approaching, and so we no longer want to, um, use those funds for, to, to support the Lake Coast program. And so what we're hoping is that, um, you guys will put New Hampshire, put the Lake Coast program in as a line item in the budget. And that, like, um, other organizations do for social services, they send you, they come to you during budget season, or send you a ledger during budget season, letting you know how much money they're gonna need for the next year ahead of time, instead of after the fact. And doing it that way, and saying, okay, we think we're gonna, you know, it looks like we're gonna need, you know, between eight and ten thousand dollars, can you do as part of the budget process rather than doing it as part of the warrant article? That way, that fund can continue to grow, so that when we get to the point of needing to do something, um, that the money, the funds are there.
So wait, the ask would be for operating budget line item and continuing investment in the warrant article?
So, so splitting the two situations, or the two funding, um, situations out, and having Lake Coast as being part of the regular budget, and any milfoil mitigation or aquatic species mitigation that may be needed, be done down the road as a separate fund completely.
That still goes in front of, uh, before voters every year to keep increasing that fund?
Correct. I wouldn't suggest changing that, if, if anything, we, we, I would recommend that we maybe bump that up a little bit, looking at how much, you know, milfoil is. Um, the, the hours per, the, the amount per hour for a milfoil, milfoil removal diver is between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And our volunteers did, uh, cause we have six certified divers, um, our total hours last year, um, with, with all of our volunteers, was nine hundred and fifty hours. So that's support...
With the divers, or?
That's divers, support staff.
And the spotters?
Yeah, 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 exactly. So it's the divers that you would be paying, but we did, um, fifty-eight... So, it's the divers that you would be paying, but we did, um, fifty-eight dives. And the fifty-eight dives, you have two divers at a time, Neil can give you more information on this if you want it. Um, a couple of hours, you know, that, that's a significant chunk of change right there.
And just so you guys know, it's not just the divers, it's, they have people in kayaks that are trying to keep boats away from the divers and then they have other people who are.
With nets to scoop up any, any floating little pieces because they, it's, it's very fragile. Um, so what we've, and, and there is, there was a, a very, very large withdrawal, um, at the state park by their canoe, um, um, rental area. There was a, a huge area right at the state park. So, you know, talking to Dave and, and working with the state park is gonna be, you know, part of our approach to, you know, what do we do? Because the other part is there's so much now around the lake that if people are swimming in non-designated swimming areas and they're mill foil, they could be spreading the mill foil right there. So, this is a, this is, you know, a, a many, many layered approach. But what we're talking about right now is, um, how, how best to fund the Lake Coast program so that we can continue that program and continue growing the fund for the mill foil at the same time.
Chris, do you envision any path or any approach where we can get the state or the state park to contribute toward these programs?
I think you all are more familiar with it than I am in terms of what, they, they, everything I've, my understanding is everything's been kind of, oh yeah, we can come help you with that, but it's not a formal thing and it's not a grant based thing, it's a goodwill thing.
So, some of it's a goodwill thing. We've had a great, we have a great, uh, um, relationship with, um, with DES and DES has sent divers out in the past. They know that we have our own group of divers now, so they, you know, don't, they, they are sending them to other places. You know, they might send them to us occasionally, I'm not really sure, um, how often that's happening these days. Um, again, Neil would be the one to, to be able to tell you. Um, every time I go and talk to the state park or, um, talk to any of our elected officials, the response that I get, and I'm getting frankly a little tired of it, is, well, we can't do it at Patuckaway because if we do it at Patuckaway, we have to do it at every single state park in, in, in the state and the funds aren't there for that.
How many other parks have the same issue that we have?
They won't tell me. I don't know.
Good chance.
Probably all of them.
So, Crystal may know, so I can, or Andrea may know, so I can certainly ask them that question. Um, but that's, that's the holdup every time, is that if they do, they can't do it for one, um, they need to do it for all.
Uh, but how about the fact that this is a huge revenue generator for them?
Yep, so we are, we are working on talking to Dave, talking to Tara, who is, you know, his boss at the, the regional level. Um, you know, there needs to be lots of conversation about what are we gonna do? Because this could greatly impact the, um, the state's revenue, um, with state park for, you know, for the entire state. So, we are, we are definitely, you know, working on plans of, you know, talking to them and, um, you know, talking to our, our, um, our state reps to make sure that they are aware of what's going on and they're aware of the situation and how, you know, we thought we had a good handle on this and then this year it just went crazy, so.
There, there's no formal state appropriation path for this activity, is there?
For which activity?
For mitigation.
So. Neil, why don't you come up here and, and help answer these questions?
That's the lever, that's the.
That's, that's where, that's what I was looking for.
So Neil Santos, sixty-three Shore Drive, and I've been leading the mill foil program at the lake for the past seven years since we found mill foil at the lake.
Amazingly, by the way.
Uh, to answer the, the previous question, the state park, the, Dave, uh, the state park, the superintendent has flat out said that they would consider putting money into helping out only if it directly affected the canoe rental or the state beach, state park beach. That's the only thing they're interested in because that's where the, the revenue is, so. Anyway, that's, that's a separate question. What was the other?
Is there a?
Oh, the grant.
When they, when they send people in.
Yeah.
How do they pay for that?
Well, the, the state has two, two divers, which are responsible for, you know, sixty-five lakes and have other things other than mill foil removal, they have to do surveys and, you know, that kind of thing. We used to use them before we had our own divers, uh, but I tried to get them in the lake this year and no luck. They just flat out too busy, no time for us.
So, these are the same guys that go look at dams and they go, uh, it's appears of Winnebago Saki or whatever.
Yeah, two guys, yeah.
Two guys, the state, right, so. You quadruple that budget line, you probably would still be begging for their attention.
Now, the state does have a grant program, the budget's been cut, like many things have been cut. And last year the budget was sixty-five thousand dollars for mill foil grants for mitigation spread across the state. So, you have to put your grants in, uh, grant proposal in September fifteenth for the following year and there's a long process. Uh, but, you know, you can see that, you know, spread across many, many lakes, some of which have now a much worse program than we do, much worse problem than we do. Uh, you know, we're talking maybe at best, you know, maybe a few thousand dollars possibly, like maybe nothing, it's hard to say.
Yep.
So what I'll say now is that right now we're kind of holding our own, the amount of mill foil areas has grown. We get eleven new areas this year. We went quintuple the amount of mill foil we removed this year from last year. So, five times as much. Uh, we're still okay, we're doing a lot of search, we have to search sixty areas, sixty acres of the lake now from known mill foil. You know, we have six divers who can remove mill foil and six others who can just search, but we're stretched pretty thin. And when I look at a couple areas like the state park, canoe, uh, rental area and Ghost Cove, we're getting to the point where I can see that it's gonna outstrip our resources within two years. Yeah, it's just kind of a guess from previous experience. And at that point, we'd have to hire contractors to come in or contract divers or in the worst case herbicides, uh, to, to suppress mill foil, all of which are expensive propositions.
And the, the herbicide is not a one-time shot, it has to be repeated every few years, right?
About every three years.
Yeah.
It's about two thousand dollars an acre to use herbicides.
Is it time to do something dramatic now?
Not quite there yet.
Yeah, the, the state would not, based on what we have right, right now, the state would not approve herbicide treatments. It has to be, it has to get to the point where they feel that divers can, can't pull it by hand. Cause obviously that's ecologically the best way and the cheapest way.
They, they make a judgment about how much your divers can do.
But there is a vacuum system too, right Neil?
Yes, there's a, I'd call dash, there's a, the divers right now, we have pull the weeds by hand, put them in bags and bring them to the surface. And when it gets more dense, the next step up would be to hire this dash boat or have a dash boat, which is a big vacuum cleaner. And what you, the divers still have to go down and dig it out of the ground, but rather than putting it in bags, they stuff it up a suction hose and bring it to the surface. So their productivity goes up. But it's only useful when you have enough density to warrant a boat being there and, you know, divers, you know, scooping up stuff.
And the only area we have for that this year was over at the state park.
Right, yeah.
And what's the cost of that?
Uh, to buy one or to rent one?
Which?
It's about five thousand dollars a day for a crew and the boat. Uh, and that's about an acre of, of mill foil. Uh, to buy about twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars. To make your own, maybe twelve thousand, thirteen thousand.
So this is why we really feel that we need to, you know, change the way the funding is done, um, so that we are not taking money out of that, that account because that account is going to be needed.
So the line item, if we put a, a line item into operating budget, that, how much would you envision that being?
Between eight and ten thousand because I don't see that we're, I, we're pretty much maxed out with what we can do right now.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, other than the, the cost of paying people more going up, um, you know, that's, that's pretty much, you know, the only way it's really going to increase. Um, unless something changes at the state park and all of a sudden we find people that really wanna work and we can add people into the state park and, you know, that's gonna change it about, probably about five thousand dollars, so fifteen would be the max, but.
So the only thing I'm, I'm grappling with and I don't know what you guys think, but, you know, right now our first draft of our budget is, and this is only first draft, it's, it's a number that's bigger than any of us want it to be. We have to do some work on that. But if we put this number in the operating budget and it continues to drive the, the budget number up, right? Because we're SB two now.
Yes.
That, it, the more, the higher that number is, the more the budget is at risk and that we end up back at the default.
So then the other question is, um, because I, that, I, I'm not surprised by that answer, is.
That's not an answer, that's just a consideration.
Right, right, no, right. Um, should we consider a separate warrant article just for Lake Coast? And then if it doesn't pass, then we go back to, what do we do now?
Yeah. That's not ideal either.
Not really, and nothing's ideal at this point.
Is the lake entirely in Nottingham or is part of it?
Entirely.
So it's entirely ours?
So you have no help from any of the surrounding communities?
No. And little to no help from the state because they own the largest amount of property on the lake.
Six thousand acres. Right, right. So, you know, water bodies under state law are, uh, held in the public trust by the state, right? It's everybody's property. And it's the state that's charged with the responsibility for preserving those.
But mill foil, I mean.
No, yeah, I, I, I know what you're, what you're gonna say.
Okay.
But the state doesn't do it.
They don't do anything, but it's, but on the flip side, we've, I, I'm just worried that we go too far down that road where we formally assume the responsibility that the state should be undertaking without, I mean.
They already didn't send their divers out because they realized we had divers.
Right, that's what I mean, they're, they're, right, they're shortchanging us because we're making an effort.
They don't, they don't see themselves as having a responsibility to it.
Well, and that's part of the problem.
You know, I mean, they don't, they don't, there's, you know, we have the programs like New Hampshire Lakes, right? And they get grants, but there's, think about it, there's really nothing, what would the state do if it was managing a lake? Right?
Isn't there, isn't there other groups in, in the, these other state parks in, uh, New Hampshire that have groups like you guys who are gonna get together with them and everybody go as a?
As far as I know, the last time I talked to, um, uh, Crystal, New Hampshire Lakes about this, we, the PLIA was the only organization that was in a state park doing Lake Coast activities. And no other state park has active Lake Coast that they run themselves. So, no, they, nobody else is doing it. If it's a, if there's a, uh, there's very few launches that are wholly owned by a single town. I mean, we don't own it because it's owned by, um, by Fish and Game. But, you know, usually a lake, you know, of our size is multiple towns and, you know, we are kind of a unique situation.
But in a way that puts their, their excuse for not doing it for us because they'd have to do it for all the other parks, it kind of puts that.
It's bogus.
It, it, yeah, it completely flattens that argument.
I agree.
Because if there are no other lakes like ours, no other programs like ours, then we truly are a unique animal in that, you know, we, we have a program that is, you know, in part funded by the, the residents around the lake. You know, the, the taxpayers of the town contribute a slice to that pie, right? Um, you know, I don't.
This is why we need to talk to our local reps. We need to get them involved with this and get them to understand, you know, how this all impacts not just, you know, the people on the lake, but the, the, all of the residents in town. Cause honestly, it affects all the residents in town. Because if this becomes a huge widespread problem, then we could start seeing a lowering of property, um, values around the lake. And that's the last thing we wanna see because then it gets spread out.
Not that this will move the state very much in their thinking, although we're gonna try. I think we're unique, I did a quick survey, and I think we're unique in the sense that the state park owns about half the shoreline in the, in the, on the lake. And given the size of the lake, I can't find any other instances where the state owns that percentage of a shoreline on a lake. So, we may indeed be unique, but I don't know that that's gonna make much of a dent in the state's thinking. Well, but most of that is national, it's not state, yeah, it's national wildlife, yeah, yeah.
I guess I, when you, you and I pretty much, I think, cooked up this ETF concept seven or eight years ago, put money away for an event where.
Yes.
Good thinking.
Well, and, and Donna was part of that conversation and, yeah.
We said there's gonna come a day where we need to throw a lot of money at this before we get to a tipping point or we need to move because.
Correct.
And we wanted to be liquid when that happened because we were, we're gonna get to a day. And are we not at that day where?
Within a couple of years of that day, I believe.
We, that we need to start, I think, it would be wise to start thinking about not hoarding that money because if you get past the tipping point, then it's not.
No, that makes sense.
Thirty, forty grand ain't gonna do you any good. If you get past that tipping point, the thirty, forty, it's, it's just not gonna touch anything.
It's gonna be a drop in bucket.
Well, the question is like, how would you use that money?
God, you, you know better than.
No, no, but I, but I, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think where we, we really need that money is, um, if we have to bring in, like we've got volunteers right now. They're, we're asking a lot of them, but, but they're doing it. And so it comes down to, do, would we need that money because our volunteer pool has, you know, diminished? We need to bring in a contractor or has the need gotten so big that we have to bring in?
Exactly.
In a contractor? Or does it come to that more critical point where we have to bring in, use herbicides on it? So, I mean, I, I think Neil, what you, what you are saying is that, it sounds like, is there really any advantage of bringing in a contractor at this point?
I would say no.
Okay.
As, as long as we can handle it with our volunteers, we're, we're, it's, we're holding the, the line if you will.
Yeah.
I'm just worried that this year it spread so much and the volume went up so high.
Yeah.
It went to the point where our six weed control divers, volunteer weed control divers are, can't do much more.
Yeah.
And if it grows again next year like it grew from year to year, we're gonna, we can't cope.
Okay, so the first, so the first step would be using those additional funds to bring in contractors? What's the balance, Chris? What is it, like thirty?
Thirty.
Yeah. Okay.
And of course we would.
Do the math on buying a boat.
What, sorry?
Don't, do the math on buying a boat, how it, how it would help you. Is it at five thousand dollars for, for contractors?
Yep.
And ten thousand dollars for a boat or whatever.
But you still need people.
Still need a crew and divers.
You're still dependent on volunteers.
And training and all of those.
What's the advantage that the boat would bring, you know, yeah, to make it easier for the volunteers?
Yeah, and of course if you had the boat and you had to hire divers, the divers we would pay would, would be more productive.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The other thing too is put out to the town that we're looking for divers that can come help because it affects everybody. And maybe we can get some additional people who are already pad, uh, certified divers to go through the training to be able to help.
I know one.
Um, so, you know.
Is there a point though where you have too many people involved in doing it? You know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but, but the answer is no. I mean, sure, there's a number, but it's a lot bigger than the number we're having.
Okay, got it, okay, all right.
And we did invest in a second hookah so we can do, so we can do two areas simultaneously with two different teams with doing the searching. They don't pull with the hookah, but doing the searching and, and surveying and, and, and read watching piece of it, we can do two areas at the same time, but then when they find it in those two areas, we need those extra people to go out and to remove from those areas. So. So, and I, I, I don't, I, I don't fully expect an answer from you guys tonight because it's just part of this process that everybody's going through right now. Um, I can absolutely do a formal letter to you guys on what we would be requesting. Um, but it would be, you know, the same as it's been the last couple of years.
So the, the, so I think that the considerations for this board are, you know, it sounds like we're getting by right now with the volunteers that we have.
But are we?
Pardon me?
But are we? I mean, it keeps increasing every year.
Well, well, to Neil, what Neil just said, right now we are. We're getting close to that tipping point where we're not gonna be able to, right?
Either we need more volunteers or we need to pay somebody, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, but I, I agree a hundred percent with Chris's point is like, let's, let's not be. any wise pound foolish at this point, like if we've got that money and, and there's a good use for it, let's, that can help, you know, ease the pain moving forward, let's do that. But then I think the other question for this board is, um, do we, as we're preparing this budget, do we wanna look at putting a line item in the operating budget to, to Chris, to our D suggestion? And, so, I mean, personally, I, I would love to take that approach, we just, we have to figure out how to best do it with what the numbers are gonna look like in the budget, so. That's, that's my take on it, I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I think that's an option, um, but I, I'm, I'm just, the idea of the boat strikes me as more of a saving grace, I think, than we realize, because, I mean, it's hard enough to find people to hire these days, let alone find volunteers, even for the worthiest of causes. So how do you make the most of the volunteers you have already? You enhance their capabilities. That's where the boat comes in, you know.
So you guys wanna think about that and come back and?
Well, does that mean that, that the town would be pulling back from, um, any kind of funding for the Lake Coast program?
Well, that would, that would, that would be counterproductive, I think.
Well, that's why I'm saying that they are separate issues, you know, we definitely come back and talk to you about, you know, what to do with the money in that fund and the best uses and things like that. Um, my concern is how are we gonna run the Lake Coast program next year?
No, I, I get it, I get it, I, I think, Tony, it sounds like you're thinking like I am, there's a short term and a longer term.
Right.
Issue and.
Yeah, short game, long game.
There's potentially a path with the state and funding, but that's gonna take years. So it's kind of like, there's, for this immediate year, we have to decide, you know, do we want to introduce that line item? Right?
Can our state rep, but I'm getting no answers from anybody, or?
Um, I haven't talked to our state rep about this particular, um, situation in a couple of years. Um, and so, you know, this stuff is all just kind of, you know, ramping up, we've, our last few meetings, um, we've really been talking about this. Um, we need to get with the state and have a meeting with them, the state being the state park, Tara.
Yeah.
Um, and Dave, um, and then reaching out to the state reps and, um, inviting them to come talk to us and get some information from us as well.
They won't do anything because this is a public body of water, they, they would do it only because the state park's presence. And when you deal with the state park, you're really dealing with, I don't know, four or five agencies in the state government that we've all, we've got to deal with and, you know, negotiate with, so it's not a simple process for sure.
Fishing game, would they be involved with it?
Oh, yeah, fishing game is definitely involved, yep. Yep, dread.
I mean, we're gonna reach out more than we have in the past, but, you know, it's, like Donna said, it's a, it's a long process.
Yeah. We're not gonna solve this by May first of next year.
No, but I, but I mean the maps, that when you look at the comparison of the two maps, that's.
Well, though Neil did, does the maps, and that's why I wanted to send them to you because they're, you know, I, I've, I looked down, talking to a friend, and there was a milfoil plant right on my own property. And I was like.
So far, the new, the new spots, for the most part, are small, but you know, we've known, we now know that milfoil does really grow in inches a day, so it can really blow up.
Yeah, so the, the one other thing that I, I don't wanna be remiss in talking about, and that is the town beach. And there is milfoil up in that area now, and people bringing kayaks and canoes and, you know, those kinds of things into the town beach could be helping with, uh, contributing to the problem. So, um, I know that a lot of people do that because they don't wanna deal with the funding launch.
Yeah.
So they just go into the town beach and do it at the town beach, um, and so I think that that needs to be looked at with the rec. You guys know where to find us if you have questions?
Yeah, just, you know, kinda take a look at, you know, like, what the option of buying a boat might be.
Okay.
And what advantage that would offer to you guys and what might be the timing for that, like, if you can kind of project, like, at this point, we think that if we invested in this boat or whatever, then it would be helpful.
And maybe even look into the possibility, you know, you'd know better than I do, but just brainstorming, maybe there are portable vacuum units that somebody who lives on the lake or visits the lake frequently enough could volunteer to mount that equipment on their boat for a day and help out, you know what I mean, rather than just having a one single static boat with the machinery on it.
I can show you some pictures of what a dash boat looks like. It's not like a, not like your average wet and dry back, we're talking about thirty-five horsepower pumps and, uh, you know, twelve hundred gallon a minute venturies and, you know, it's.
You also don't want people that are not, that don't know what they're doing, going out doing this, because they could make the matter worse.
Oh, right.
So, yeah.
No, it's, it's a dedicated barge or boat.
Yeah, yeah.
They usually go stripped down pontoon boats and mount this stuff on a stripped down pontoon boat.
Okay.
All right, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Review action items for next meeting. We'll still be talking about the budget.
Do you, do you wanna do this?
Do you wanna do the, uh?
Try and send the, the time capsule?
Time capsule thing.
What was the thing about the digging, no Chris up there maybe, or?
Yeah, um, I, I, I don't know the historical significance, but, um, I know we've always dissuaded anybody from talking anything up there, I don't know.
Sorry, I'm gonna do some digging and they do hiss on me, I have a world of, there'll be prime tape all over the place. I think it's a good idea.
And where's this?
They'd wanna put a, uh, square. Maybe bury it next to the general statue.
So she's proposing this, but asking us how to do it and how we would do it?
If we, I think if we build a power. I don't know, when they have, well, the temporary service, like to have power up there for different functions. The utility is in the way, it's a historical period or nothing.
The whole, the whole.
There's no trench yet.
Well, if it's a historical area, do we want people doing, in putting stuff there?
If it was up to me because of the historical significance of it, I'd say no.
I was just trying to think if there's someplace else that makes sense.
Yeah.
Like, I, I know they've got one in the school.
Right, yeah.
Embedded in the school.
Wonder if the, any of the houses up there? I don't know, celebration, I guess. I got bone.
I don't know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of not in favor of doing it there as well because of the historical significance, but also, we don't want this to become a, you know, a, a place that gets dug up all the time and used for different things, right?
Yeah, which, uh, actually, we should probably start, we should, seeing how we're on that topic of digging stuff up. Perhaps maybe we should start posting some of these properties, no digging. Particularly those who do the metal detecting. That's, could be done, but just food for thought.
So some ideas for other locations?
Yeah, I'm just.
What about like, I mean, do we envision the town hall moving in the next twenty-five years? We could, you know, down by our newly landscaped flagpole, put a, put a concrete slab and bury it under that right next to the flagpole. It's on their lights, it's on their cameras, sort of.
Yeah, that was the only thing I could come up with too, Tony.
Put a flower bed or all around it.
I'd be fine with that.
Yep.
Make it great level with the ground and we can use it as home plate as well. Kill two birds with one stone. But I think it would be good out there, that'd be a purpose.
Yeah, I think out here would be great.
Ben, could you share with your audience what you thought you were on?
We're talking about the, um, time capsule, um.
Who?
Who, who's it from?
School.
The school, they wanna put a time capsule originally up at the, uh, town square. Uh, but the board is, uh, you know, the general consensus is that due to historical significance, that that wouldn't be a viable option. However, the alternative would be to, uh, place a time capsule in or around the newly, uh, hardscaped, uh, flagpole.
So I think what, I do think what she's trying to do though is the, the charter day event that the three hundredth committee is planning is supposed to be up at the square. Right, so she was trying to make it a part of that event, yeah. But are there, are there any events that are scheduled for here, right?
Well, the parade will be around here.
Yeah. So maybe we can tie it to the parade.
And the, just the lesser events, there'll be other lesser events here, not the charter day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is this something that the school is probably?
About the, um, what are they called? Summer Institute, uh, real life program as well.
But that's part of the school though, right?
Yeah.
It, it, it's a program that one of the teachers has run every summer for certain kids and it's a different focus of, you know.
Why would they put it at the school?
Well, I, I think she's trying to tie it to the, to the three hundred celebration, that's, that's all. So, I mean, it, 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 that idea in itself, I think, is a good idea, you know, um, 'cause it, I think it could be an interesting part of the, the whole celebration, but I, I think it would be better here than up at the town square. So, is that what we want?
It's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I send you a meeting calendar for next year?
It's fine, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's consistent, it's every other Fri, every other Monday, right? Yeah, that's fine.
Except for February.
Yeah, February gets long.
Seven and twenty, there's a three week gap there.
Yeah, and Russia's shown those left flank sort of.
Okay.
Any other topics?
Not for public.
Uh, okay, ready to go non-public then?
It's a, right, Chris?
Audience?
Audience, the audience have anything?
Yes.
Go ahead. Come on up, Jean.
Make sure you state your name so we know who you are.
Okay.
Jean Reed, three forty-five stage row. With the proceeds from the USA Springs property, I hope the board considers mitigating the tax, property tax when the numbers come in. Uh, but you have an option at that time to take money, don't you, to to mitigate that, so that's just a suggestion, and I, I've been approached with some people about that too, and I said I would come forward and, and, and ask you to consider that. The COVID, it's about five hundred K, I think, money, COVID money that's been sent to the town. It, it, was there a time limit on that, or is that?
Twenty twenty, or it has to be committed and spent for twenty-five or twenty-six.
So you got a window of opportunity?
Several years.
Yeah.
Before it has to be committed to any.
So you're using every possibility you can to make use of that for the approved uses?
Yeah, we've had, we've had a few conversations about eligible uses and we don't have a great rainbow of choices. Stormwater, uh, water quality improvement would be under, but don't have an immediate, well, a direct taxation.
I, I spoke with a, with a buyer for a property in town that's had about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of back taxes that haven't been paid. And he indicated he's gonna be buying that property.
Who, what?
Could you say that?
There's a property in town that has about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of back taxes? You familiar with that property?
I think I know which one you're talking about, yeah.
And who's gonna buy it?
A buyer, who I spoke with. He's in the process of doing his due diligence, so I hope he clears the hurdles.
We all do.
And that would be another source of unexpected revenue that's been carried as a overdue tax, uh, collection. And I bring that up because once again, the way I see the budgets going, it, it could be quite a exciting time when they get their Christmas present, because the way we're going, through no fault of anybody here, it, it, the tax bills are gonna be hitting about Christmas time, I would say, or a week before. They're gonna be due at Christmas time, they got thirty days from the time that they're mailed. And, uh, a- again, no, no fault in this room that I know of, but it's, it's gonna be, uh, I, I hope the board does all they can to make that palatable. On the subject of palatable, does the board have any intention of adjusting the elderly exemption amounts to reflect the increase in property values? Right now, we have, there's three categories, sixty-five to seventy-four, seventy-five to seventy-nine, eighty years of age, and it's a progressive exemption for those people that qualify, and there are, there are a lengthy list of qualifying things. But because of the revale, there have been instances, there are instances of, of people that were shocked when they got their revaluation, and that margin from what is the exempt part to the new market value is considerable. And I think you've seen some abatement requests because of that. Um, there's, again, there's, there's more talk, um, about that, so my question is, does the board have any intention of raising the exemption amount? Or have you discussed it? Let's start with that, have you discussed it?
We have not discussed it at, at any length, but I mean, obviously, that is something that, uh, and we can certainly take under advisement and review, uh, obviously not tonight, but.
No, no.
Um, but that is something we can take in consideration.
I think you should, a lot of towns are, I just happened to pull up Nashua, and Nashua is, uh, we're at one oh one for the first category and they're at one ninety-four. We're at one forty-two for the second category, seventy-five to seventy-nine years of age. Uh, they're at two twenty-four, which obviously is reflecting new property values and the increase, and once again, it leaves less for those affected to pay in taxes. And we're at one forty-two, so two twenty-four versus one forty-two. Um, and the last category is eighty years of age or older. Uh, we're at one eighty-four and they're at two, two eighty, so almost a hundred thousand dollars difference. And I'm not suggesting those as the baseline for here, but I think there should be some effort made. How would I know if you're gonna consider that, because if you don't? How would I know if you're gonna consider that? Because if you don't, I, I will probably sponsor a warrant article, a petition warrant article. But I would rather see it have support from the, from the board of selectmen. So, again, no decision tonight. I'm not asking for one, but please put it on your agenda to, to talk about it. What is the last date, um, for petition warrant articles? Do you know, Chris, or is, what's that dependent on?
Hmm, I think I might have it here.
Is that by RSA?
Yeah, uh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm done talking.
How long?
You can email it to me. It's your pleasure. Do that?
I will.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that's all for tonight, and you'll be posting the other meetings that you're gonna have with department heads and CIP probably next Tuesday? Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Welcome.
Any others? No? All right. So I guess we'll go into non-public. Uh, once we're done with non-public, we'll read a marriage from non-public and, uh, close our meeting.
Could you save the reasons for going into non-public, please?
I'll make a motion we go into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A.
In the subject matter of that is that qualifiers.
Personnel.
Oh, personnel, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
RSA? Uh, Tuesday, January eleventh.
For your petition warrant articles.
Is that, is that specific, uh, by date or by before something or after something? Uh, it is a certain number of days before something else, like town meeting. The date, I get the date from the NHMA. The NHMA calculates it from RSA thirty-nine colon three and four all thirteen.
Okay. There's a motion out there for, uh, non-public. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
As a doctor, I wanted to vote by a vote to say, hi, Jean.
Okay. All those in favor? Roll call.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, Donna.
Okay. We are now entering non-public. Thank you, Nottingham. Have a good night.